Do I have a second?
Second.
A roll call vote, member Pollock?
Yes.
Member Lanahan?
Yes.
Chairman McBride?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, let me just preface this meeting by saying we have had two previous meetings. The first meeting was focused on our responsibility of seventy-five Monroe, on seventy-five Monroe for mass and scale. We reached a satisfactory solution on that, we felt. And so the second meeting we had was on style for the buildings. And let me describe the objectives of of what we're trying to achieve in style. First of all, we use style to help minimize the mass and scale appearance. And if, if done well, we think we can even pull that mass and scale appearance down if the style is varied a little bit, building to building, section to section. Secondly, we use style, as we said in a previous meeting, to be compatible with buildings in the village. And we described Commercial Main Street as an example, how no two buildings in Commercial Main Street look exactly alike. We also said that we would like to pick up some of the style elements of the buildings down at Cheyenne Place. And third, we said, we'd like to pick up some of the elements of residential buildings in the village, residential houses. So with that, we ask the applicant to show us how they would address those objectives with style of all of the buildings. And with that, I'll turn it over to the folks, the applicant for seventy-five Monroe.
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, everyone, for your time tonight. Chris DiMarzo, one of the owners of seventy-five Monroe Avenue. I have with me tonight Craig Jensen from CJS and one of his architects, Miriam. And Bill, you said it very well. I'll let them take you through the drawings. I know you guys hopefully have gone through the drawings and looked at them, but they'll take you through what their concept was from the beginning to the end, and then hopefully we can talk about it.
Great.
I'm just gonna share my screen if that's okay with everybody.
All right. Yeah, thanks for the summary, Bill. I think, you know, that was really good. And then I think we'd like to start at least very briefly with the presentation we had last time, just to remind everyone kind of of our point of departure for this meeting. We had shown you some fairly developed studies of Building One, the building closest to Monroe Avenue. So I think we want to just kind of remind you where we left off there. And then we can lead from there into the work we've been doing.
I need access.
Oh, you don't have access to share?
No, I don't.
I'm setting that up right now.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead and try.
Perfect, thank you.
Great. Okay, so this was our no, this is not, this is not the last one, Miriam, from our prior meeting on the maybe the fifteenth. Oh, yeah, okay, this is good. Yeah, my apologies. So you're good. So, you know, obviously, we had talked as a group about the kind of canal commercial or industrial vernacular and how we thought that was, you know, partly going to be what we're going to draw from for this project, both at Shown Place and elsewhere along the canal. So we talked with you about these types of images. You can go through these pretty quick, Miriam, want to kind of get us all back on the same page. You know, in this kind of very stripped down, you know, style with really a lack of style, almost, you know, lack of ornament. And that that's really the success of these buildings, you know, that there's simple masses, you know, simple materials, not a lot of architectural ornamentation. That's where we were going, and it seemed like we were all on the same page there. Go ahead, you can keep going. So this was the elevation on the canal side that we had shown of the first building, what we're calling Building One. And this, you know, had a number of different materials, both brick and different siding types, different roof configurations and some, you know, roof elements as well as second floor, well, actually, third floor, I guess, roof terraces, the back, you know, having pitch drews and other kind of tower type elements. And again, a different, a whole series of different siding types and also a varied color palette. So we walked you through this building and talked about, you know, how it activates both the canal side and, you know, other aspects of the site. And I think, you know, there was, I think, a pretty good consensus that we were on the right track. So we've taken that now, and, you know, we have changed the first building a little bit. Only because as we've expanded our study to include the entire site, we started to think, you know, in our opinion, that we don't need quite as much variation in any individual building, and that the variation can be in part in individual buildings, but in part develop over the full extent of the site. We're certainly open to a conversation about that. And if you feel differently, we'd love to hear that. I mean, it's not, this is not a cost issue. The number of different materials is still going to be expressed throughout the site. It's really just, you know, what feels right, you know, what's the right thing to do? So, you know, when you look at the site plan here, a couple of other things I'd like to point out as we go along here, we're going to look at these individual buildings one at a time. But keep in mind that the site is more complex than just seeing these buildings straight on. Number one, you know, the site has a slight curve or arc to it. So you'll see these buildings in slightly different orientations as you move down the site, which will add again another layer of complexity, which I think will be, you know, add interest. There's going to be other outbuildings, whether they be small garages or gazebos or the clubhouse out by the canal. There's going to be paths and walkways and landscaping. A lot of other appearances or, you know, additional elements that are going to add additional layers of complexity that I think will add more texture. I'm not apologizing in any way for the way the buildings look. I think they look really good. But just keep in mind, there's even more that will get layered on top of that to kind of provide more scale and varying scales. I mean, I think, you know, like the addition of smaller elements like garages or gazebos will also add to the kind of variations on the site, just in terms of scale, which I think will really help as we move this even further forward. So with that, we're going to go, I think, building by building. And, you know, we can talk as much as you want. I'm going to focus, at least, at least my initial discussion is going to focus on the canal side, the north side. You're going to see the south side and the east and the west sides of all these buildings as we move through here. But I'm going to focus my presentation on the north, and we can certainly stop and, and talk in greater detail about other sides to the extent that you would like to do that. So here, you know, this is again, the first building. So you're going to, if you remember what it looked like at the last presentation, you're going to see some differences here. We've reduced the number of of colors on the north side. You know, we've got a brick element in the center, but not the full width of that center section. Part of that darker section would be a clabbered type siding in the right hand side Miriam was pointing to would be the brick with, with the lintels over the windows. So, so that's, you know, the brick section. There's a clabbered section. Then either side of that higher center section, we've got two-story portions with roof terraces and buildings beyond. And then little buildings on top of those roof terraces. The massing is identical to what you've seen before. So we didn't change the massing. We may have either added or deleted some rooftop elements. So there's like some little monitors on the top of one roof, but not the other. There's a little stair tower poking up. You know, so there's some activity at the roof scape, you know, at that kind of horizon line, which really adds interest. There's the rooftop decks, which add interest. And then, of course, there's the, you know, ground level entrances and balconies and patios that add interest. So we've got all those kinds of things going on. We did actually change on the, if you go to the next slide, Miriam, the east elevation, that's the elevation that would be facing out towards Monroe Avenue. We made a change there. We actually made that end building in the, on the north side red, as opposed to, I think it was gray or black before. It would be a vertical board and batten type siding, maybe a little bit more of a, you know, agricultural theme. This, again, is open to conversation and debate. It's now a little different than the west side in this case, but not all buildings are different on the east and west in terms of their color palettes. Some of the buildings you'll see have more similarities between those east and west sides.
So again, this, does, I, I thought maybe the red in the buildings represented brick. Is that not the case?
No, not, not the case. No. So the, the only brick on this first building, if you go back one slide, Miriam, is the darker center section with the lintels over the windows. And we have some red brick within the overall proposal. And we have some darker bricks. Oh, actually, yeah, thank you. Thank you. Miriam's pointing to one of the, there's a brick tower on the back of this building as an example. But red is not necessarily brick. So this building has like a board and batten siding in a vertical orientation. It has horizontal siding, potentially with variety of exposures and certainly with a variety of different color palette, you know, different colors. And then it's got the dark building on the far left of the south elevation is actually metal siding. We're using very little metal siding on the project, but just in a couple of spots, just to create, again, a little unique quality in locations. Most of the buildings are predominantly like a fiber cement or painted siding product, which I think is consistent with, you know, what you see at Shown Place and, you know, a lot of other kind of canal side vernacular areas. But we do have obviously masonry and some metal siding, just, just to mix it up. I'll try and point out all the brick as we go through. Miriam, if I miss something, just point it out, you know. So east and west, you know, the east were very prominent. The west is actually, you know, facing into Building Two. So you'll see that only obliquely. You won't never see that straight on. Although I think it's, you know, it's a nice mix of both massing and materials. So it's still working for us. Now, if we went to the second building, which you haven't seen yet, again, the top is the canal side elevation. So here, you know, as the massing has been kind of displayed to you before, the ends of the building are three stories tall. The center is only two stories with a large kind of, you know, terrace up there. And the third story is, you know, well back. So you won't really see that third story, you know, as you pass along the canal side in the center of the building. In this case, the entire center of the building is brick. That red that you see is in fact brick. So no surprise there, maybe. But other elements are either like a clabbered type siding or not sure if we have any vertical siding on this, Miriam, or not. Maybe the, I think it's all, we do not on this building. And again, you know, go ahead.
On that center section on Building Two is those are apartments with their own gardens that are on top of the brick.
That's correct. Yeah. So there is actually access to that roof terrace is from both the apartment on the three-story to the left and the apartment on the three-story to the right. And then we actually have, I think, another access from apartments that are on the south side of the building. So the apartments on the south side also have access to that roof terrace through that kind of center between the two pergolas. Is that correct, Miriam? I think that's correct.
Yeah, that's correct. We were talking about having more open roof terrace for the rest of the building.
Yeah.
In the center space.
So at least three apartments, at least three apartments would have access to that center of Veranda, outside Veranda.
That is correct. Potentially four, but at least three. And similar on Building One, we have four apartments that would have access to those two roof terraces. So, you know, trying to get the most, you know, I guess, payback on those, not only from a development standpoint, but also just from an activation standpoint, the more activity we can create, you know, on the facade of this building, whether it's on terraces or balconies or porches or decks or on decks, I guess, patios, the better. You know, I mean, when you see these things, there's a, they communicate potential energy that, you know, every time you see an entrance or you see a door, you see a stoop, it kind of speaks to you as to what could happen. So that's kind of potential energy that we want to create on the facade. But then the next light layer, obviously, is to get to like real energy and actually get people out there. So obviously, that we want both. Yeah. So, Miriam, you can go to the next. So the sides of this building, you know, one is obviously facing into Building One, one is facing into Building Three. These are facades that you will never see straight on. You'll see them quite obliquely. So you can't, you know, these are, we don't see them as being as important from the standpoint of being a composition. You're going to see them obliquely. So it's more about bringing light and and air into these units and keeping them, you know, again, simple and kind of consistent with the commercial vernacular. But not trying to do a lot here. I think we were trying to do more, you know, where you're going to appreciate it on the, on the north and the south. You can see the entrance of the parking structure there. But, you know, that's really at this, at the slowest level.
Let me understand that roof line on the, from the sides.
Yeah.
There's, there is a slight slope to sections of that roof. Is that?
Yeah, that's right. So those, the wings of the building that project out, you know, to the east and the west have a some, some slight cant on the roof. So there's a slight sloping portion and then a flat portion. It does provide us a little bit of interest, you know, on the, on the on the one side where the roof slopes up, we may be able to get, as we're showing, like a little, you know, clear story or transom above the door, maybe do a little bit more of a vaulted ceiling in that unit. It creates, again, just a little bit more interest and diversity. It's pretty, it's pretty subtle. Yeah, you may not even notice it that much as you move down, down the canal, but it's there.
Okay.
So then, going on to Building Three, the canal side is on the left. So, you know, here we have the amenity space on the, on a portion of the ground floor. And that ground floor drops down a little bit. This, the site is actually, you know, these buildings don't all sit at the same elevation. So this building is already stepping down a little bit. And the right hand side of that north elevation will, the grades will be a little bit lower. So we can get a taller volume for the amenity space that exists behind that little kind of portico where you see the kind of garage door element. So we've put a garage door element in there to kind of stress the kind of industrial and commercial kind of character of this area. Now, that would be an operable door, but it would be into, you know, some sort of amenity space. I mean, so it probably is closed most of the time, but on nice days, you know, if this is a a place where people are gathering, then, you know, you could open it up to the, to the porch and, you know, kind of spill, spill out of that. There's a slight setback on the third floor on the, you know, left side of the north elevation. You can see a little roof terrace up there. And, you know, we've introduced some other roof elements. There's like a little overhang with little, you know, brackets underneath it that basically sits on top of the, the blue portion. This is generally all a sided building with, again, different colors and different exposures, but it's, it's all essentially painted product, which, you know, the more we look at places like Shown Place, the more we see that's kind of the, that's what a lot of this vernacular is built out of. And I think it keeps it, you know, kind of humble and simple, which I think is is what the canal is kind of about. South elevation, oh, yeah, that's fine. No. East and west, you know, the west is the one that will be open to the green space. You know, you can see another overhead door there and the continuation of that little portico that wraps the building. The east elevation is facing back into Building Two. So east elevation is really not something that's going to be observed, again, other than, you know, very obliquely as you, you kind of pass by the, that space between, between the buildings. I know I'm going a little fast here, but I think we can come back to these. I want to give you the kind of overview and then we can, you know, we return to whatever issues you, if you're making notes, whatever issues you find to be, you know, most, most important to talk about. But of course, if you want to stop me, that's also, also obviously totally fine. You know, again, here, you know, some of the things like the stair towers are popping up to create, you know, that break in the, in the horizon line. So you get this kind of more animated roofs, roof scape, even though it's not tall. You know, I think breaking those lines and creating that, that variation is really important to kind of the overall texture. If you have a uniform, you know, roof height, you know, it's just not going to be the same. So then we go to Building Four. You know, it's, it's similar to Building Three, but then again, very different. You know, we're using a different kind of awning that's hanging out. It's suspended and hang out over this amenity space on this side. You know, more like you'd find in a kind of loading dock kind of configuration. It's very typical of these canal side buildings and other commercial structures like this, you know, that are service oriented to have these awnings or these, well, I guess, yeah, awnings that are, that are just suspended. So you don't have any columns in the way and you can kind of, you know, drive your truck up anywhere and do whatever you need to do. Again, the overhead door and, you know, more glazing at the bottom. You know, here that the gray portion, we're showing some sort of masonry type product in that location, just in that kind of small area, which makes it very different than the building directly adjacent that we just talked about, even though, you know, these are similar, similar configurations. They're not the same. And the material palette, you know, wants to be a little different. Again, there's a setback on that canal side above the, the white clabbered, you know, and you set back and get another little roof terrace there for some activity up on the top. South elevation, you know, this is, you know, facing the railroad tracks. And again, there's, there's this, you know, a little setback there and some variation going on. But this is a relatively small, you know, building in terms of its east-west direction. So we, we don't need to break this up too much, frankly. Go to the next, Miriam. Side elevations, again, the one that really counts is the most, most is the east. That's the one facing the green space that has a kind of larger kind of opportunity to see it, you know, more frontally. And so again, you know, similar type overhead door and trying to create a little bit of more of a community conversation between this building and the Building Three directly across. And then the west elevation would be backing up, you know, towards Building Five. So go, go to the next. So now we get to Building Five. This has, you know, that recessed center portion again. And then, you know, three-story portions on the two ends on the north elevation. But here, you know, we've taken, now, this has got brick on the east end, you know, where those lintels are occurring there above the windows. But then the center section is clabbered and then the left-hand section is clabbered. And then the back is all actually like a board, board and batten vertical siding. Not sure. I don't think we have any other masonry on this building. The, the towers in the back are also a siding type product. We've added some roof monitors here, just, you know, very different than the ones you saw on Building One. They're oriented differently. They're, they're actually turned ninety degrees and they have a kind of a different flavor than, than the other ones. But again, to break that horizon line, again, just trying to activate the building as much as possible, but still retain that kind of industrial, kind of commercial canal character. There is a little bit of a hint up at the upper right-hand corner of where, where we're going for Building Six. There's an opening that's kind of in the facade that opens basically right out onto the patio. So as you step out onto the patio, that's kind of a framed opening in a wall. A little bit of a different device than we're using elsewhere. We're going to see that reoccur in, in Building Six down the road. You can go to the next one. Or maybe Building Seven. I think I misspoke. Is that right, Miriam? That's Building Seven is going to happen.
It's actually both of them.
Okay, well, all right, then I'm not wrong. Okay, so east and west sides here, I think, you know, what we like about this is really that it really speaks to being separate buildings, right? So, you know, you've got the gable roof and you've got the flat roof next to each other. You know, it's more like a streetscape, even in the, even as you move north, south, regardless of whether you're moving north, south or east, west, instead of having a really deep building, you know, just like the other buildings, you know, we, we've got this kind of two-part system going here that I think, you know, in this case is really, really working for us. But, but again, these, these are sides are up against other buildings. So you'll see these obliquely, you know, you won't see them straight. And again, some board and batten and some clabbered siding. You're, you're fine, Miriam, you can go ahead. So we move to Building Six and canal side is on top again. You can see, you know, center section now is coming forward with the three-story portion with terraces, you know, roof terraces left and right. And then you can see there, similar to what I talked about on Building Five, there's an opening on Building Six up at that roof terrace. But again, it's kind of like the frame of the building is opening up to the roof terrace and kind of creating a little bit more of a, well, I'm going to just say a little bit more playful kind of interpretation of some of these buildings. Not necessarily like a ruin or anything like that, but it still just creates a different interest and some variation that we didn't have before. The back of this building has those kind of canted roofs, but now they're going in the other direction. They were going, you know, front to back on a prior building. Here they're going side to side with little braces that hold up the overhangs. This is, you know, a little bit of a, I would call it a kind of quirky kind of part of this particular building. It's not something that's expected, probably. But again, I think we're looking for ways to create more interest and variety, not necessarily to say that this is the the perfect building if there was only one building, but we're trying to create this impression or this, this sense of imperfection, you know, the, the, the most perfect things are actually the most imperfect things in a way, like, you know, a tree is incredibly imperfect. When you look at all the kind of, you know, weathered conditions it's survived, you know, with branches growing in different directions and all the kind of hardships it's endured over its life. It's really perfect, but it's certainly got all kinds of imperfections within it. And, you know, we're talking about a development here that really is supposed to be more about those imperfections adding up to something that's really nice, rather than trying to make something that is incredibly well reasoned all the way through. Like, if you look at a a city, it's, it's more complex than just making everything perfect. It's just more complicated than that unless you go to a city like Bath, you know, or something where they have these, you know, crescents and these townhouses that are all perfect for blocks and blocks and blocks. But in general, that's not the way communities are. And I think this, this kind of quirky roof detail is, is a part of that bigger story. It maybe doesn't survive as well on its own, but as part of a, a bigger development, I think these things actually help. Again, you know, roof things poking up, you know, stair towers poking up and the other kinds of things we've talked about here. Again, access to these roof terraces by four different units and then balconies, obviously, for these units and as well as, you know, ground floor entrances and, and stoops. Go ahead. Oh, go back for a second, Miriam. Did I miss? No brick on the front of this building, I believe. Is that correct on the canal side?
Yeah, there's no brick.
Yeah, okay, okay. You can go on. So side elevations here, again, you know, seen obliquely because they're in between buildings. Six and seven. Oh, I want to point out just for, just for clarity, the little key plan that you see at the bottom here that we're kind of marching along. This key plan is accurate except for one thing. And that is, you know, in order to show the buildings flat on and show you a elevation that's a true projection of the building, this key plan has actually got all the buildings in an aligned. They're all aligned in a perfectly straight line. I mean, they might step back, but they're not kinked or canted in any way. This is, we're doing this in the computer so we can project the elevations accurately. But the site plan we looked at originally at the beginning of this presentation is the accurate site plan. They will, in fact, have this more radius or kind of kinked. This, this will be the, the way they're laid out on the site. So the one that's at the bottom of the page is for reference. this, this will be the, the way they're laid out on the site. So the one that's at the bottom of the page is for reference only. And we do use it to create our, our drawings because it projects the elevations accurately. But it does not, you know, reflect the, the true orientation of these buildings on the site. That's just a little disclaimer. Um, I think, you know, uh, no surprises here. You can see the, the steps in the building, that type of thing, uh, from front to back, you know, obviously high in the back, you know, low toward the canal side. Um, on, on both ends and the little roof terrace is up there. Go ahead, Miriam. So, um, you know, moving on to building seven, you know, we took a little bit of a different approach for building seven. Um, instead of maintaining is, you know, what was in the past, fairly strict vertical separations between elements. You know, where we changed, you know, with a vertical line between, you know, the left sent section or the center section or the right hand section. Here we started to now extend some of those vertical sections with kind of horizontal legs that start to cross over, another part of the building. You know, this is not as typical in the kind of, canal side vernacular, but you do see things like this happening and it, it just seems as though, we should have, other conversations or other, other things happening. And this is, this worked well for us on this somewhat larger building. The red in this case is in fact brick. Um, so as maybe expected, but like I said, not, not all every case, but on the canal side, that, that red portion is brick. And we do have some openings that project through some of these initial facades to the materials beyond, like you see the, the white that overlays the gray on the right, or you see up on the balcony on the left, the dark gray that overlays that, that balcony. On the rear side, we introduced another element that I think is, you know, maybe a little unexpected. It's kind of this, kind of, we, we've been calling it, it's not exactly correct, but a horse barn type configuration. And it's a, it's a profile that you do see in this type of vernacular architecture. You know, it's, it's a larger element on this building as a backdrop to the building, um, that you'll see, you know, beyond these, uh, roof terraces. Um, again, you know, it's an element that we think can work at this end of the site, you know, as maybe a little bit, larger element because you're now further removed from, you know, Monroe Avenue and you're going to see this for the most part from a long distance, you know. Um, the, the internal road that, that's, um, navigates through the development or down this, canal side and then back across along the railroad tracks, doesn't extend, uh, this far. This building is just beyond, you know, where you would turn and, and head back toward, a Monroe Avenue. So these are more elements that are going to be seen a little bit more, uh, you know, well, in general, I'm going to say, uh, from, from a distance. And I think we can get away with a little bigger, bigger element here. Again, it's not really about, uh, any kind of economy of scale here. It's really just trying to figure out, what's going to work, what's going to create the right level of interest, what's going to break that horizon line in ways that is going to be successful. You know, whether you're close to it or, or further away. Um, go to the next. So the two sides here, you know, uh, again, you know, a little different than what you've seen before. Um, the one side on the left facing into building six and then the other side facing west and, you will, I think, see that west elevation as you approach on the canal path. Uh, you know, on the opposite side, as the canal path comes in village, uh, you'll get, you know, that will be the presentation and of, of this, site, although Miriam, if you go back to the overall view, the, um, no, the, the site plan, that's the accurate site plan, you know, it is again, kinked a little bit. So the elevation maybe depending on how the canal trail runs on the opposite side, how much of a straight on view you'll get and how much vegetation is going to obscure that. I guess we haven't, really looked at that, but I think we, we should recognize that that's an important elevation. Uh, potentially for people on the canal path that are going to experience this, this neighborhood, you know, initially from that end. I mean, that, that may be a smaller group of people, but it's still, still important. Um, so that is the, you know, like, general summary of where we are. I think, you know, the only things I would say beyond that is, you know, we've, um, we, we've kind of gone with what we've talked about, that, you know, these buildings are pretty devoid of ornaments. We're not using architectural styles per se to try and dress these up. We're trying to strip them down. Even much more consistent with this canal side vernacular, which is really devoid of that kind of architectural ornament. And really rely on the massing and the materials and, the overall building configurations and, and levels of activity that we can bring to, balconies or stoops or terraces or roofscapes as ways to, to activate the building. And again, you know, not trying to make this thing perfect in the sense of, you know, classical symmetries and other kinds of really, um, you know, um, resolved architectural kind of, um, statements. It's, it's much more about, the streetscape, you know, the, the complexity that you see on Main Street or the complexity you see at shown place. And trying to, you know, obviously work with those, success stories or those places that everybody identifies with in terms of how they, um, are, a series of events, you know, with pedestrian scale and a lot of interest and complexity, but, but they're not a unified composition. There, there, there are a series of things happening together that obviously work well together. But don't necessarily, weren't necessarily all thought about, you know, as a collective whole. They, they, there's more organic than that, uh, kind of like the tree analogy with this kind of, you know, um, it's, it's more, the imperfections are what add kind of interest and, and character to the tree. So I will stop talking for a minute. Chris or Miriam, if you want to add anything. Otherwise I guess we should probably entertain questions.
Thank you, Craig. Uh, very thorough. I appreciate that. Uh, you know, I'm happy to answer any questions. I'm sure Craig and Miriam can, can answer any questions you have.
Yeah, Miriam's done a lot of work on this, so she certainly is, is familiar with it as I am. So, you know, we'll probably both, uh, pitch in here if, if there are specific questions that want to. Oh, you know, one thing I didn't mention, you know, which was on my list to mention, things like, uh, windows, you know, we have different siding materials and different siding exposures and, you know, different color palettes. The windows are the same, you know, the, those lintels in, in brick locations, there's different window, configurations and mutton patterns. There would of course be different window colors, right? So, we're not going to think that each one of these different color palettes that's represented in this neighborhood, would have, you know, either a beige or a taupe or a white or a black window. There, there needs to be that level of, diversity also in some of the elements that we, we're doing here. I don't know if we've really figured out what the individual window frame colors should be, but I would assure you that they will be, as diverse as is appropriate to make this all kind of, you know, come together and not come together too much.
I guess the only thing I would add is that looking at this elevation, we were trying to draw from Main Street. And, um, using it as a precedent for how, um, the, the nature of that street and how it breaks up. Um, just a thought to add.
Yeah.
Um, okay, uh, Bill McBride. If, uh, you have finished your presentation, I'm, I'm going to open it up to comments. Um, and, um, I, I'll make an overall comment and then maybe a couple of comments. Um, I, you, you've really done an excellent job of, of diversifying the look of these buildings. So that they, uh, reflect the village as well as, um, um, break up the mass, massive look, style look, so that the style helps pull down, um, uh, the mass look. Uh, you, you've really done a fine job and I, I frankly, that, that last building, building seven, you almost won me on that. Does that, that, that is, that is a massive building in length. And, and what you've done there is just, uh, uh, incredible. I, 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 my one biggest issue here is, I, I still think that building needs to be broken up somewhere, with a walkthrough like you have between buildings five and six, not a road, just a walkthrough. Doesn't have to be wide, but, uh, uh, as a brilliant of a job you've done, um, structuring those pieces, uh, uh, um, I still, feel a need to separate that building a little bit. Not, not a big wide separation, but simply a walkthrough somewhere, like you did between buildings five and six on that. That's my, that's my, uh, biggest issue, uh, on this. Um, I have a, I like what you've done with the roof lines in general. Um, though I, on building five, um, I, I wonder if we shouldn't, uh, break up that roof line that runs the entire length of the building, into maybe a center section with a slightly different roof line. Uh, because the way, uh, the way it is, uh, continuous, um, uh, higher pitch roof line really, uh, exaggerates the heights of that building a little bit. And I, and I think maybe a simple solution is, um, don't throw out that, uh, roof line as you've got it on the two, ends, but maybe in the center, you drop that roof dot line lower or flatten it, um, uh, in some way. Um, uh, and, um, then I have a little concern about the south elevation of that building five. Uh, that is sort of a little too homogeneous. I wonder if you can't, uh, diversify that a little bit with either materials, different materials, in the sections or, or as you have done, uh, elsewhere. Um, a little variation of the sections. Um, and those are my only, uh, concerns. Uh, I, I think you've really done, a, a brilliant job of, of, uh, using style to one, integrate with the village. And, and to pull down the mass even further, the visual mass even further. That, that, that's my opinion.
Thank, thank you. I mean, I think with regard to building five, you know, certainly we had some internal debates too about, you know, the, the, the continuity of that roof line and the continuity of the back of the building. We did it, I think, because, we started to convince ourselves, at least I convinced myself that, uh, a, a way to add additional, variations, one, one way to do that was to have a building that didn't have as many variations, which is a little counterintuitive, right? But, but it's kind of like, well, one of the variations is less variation. But we're, I think, happy to go back and look at that and, maybe say, okay, maybe a little more variation would help, would help. But we did have a logic to this, which was, you know, that sometimes, you know, you need to make a change in a different direction to make people appreciate something else. But, but I, I respect your points. So.
I respect that. I'd, I'd like to, the other members of the board, to log in on their opinion about that, that roof line on building five.
And we're, and we're certainly not adverse to, you know, coming back and, you know, looking at, both ways and saying, okay, here's what we had. Here's, you know, something that Bill suggested and, you know, we're working it out with you guys. Um, but we'll go ahead.
I actually found, uh, that to be pretty successful. Um, much in line with what Craig was saying, that this, building sets itself apart from the others that have all the pieces and even from the opposite, um, north elevation, that is broken up. It's the one building that, you know, carries a similarity all the way across and it, it didn't, didn't bother me at all. Um, I thought you had a very successful, um, ratio of diversity and repetition throughout these buildings, um, quite a lot of work. The, uh, let's see, there was really only the, the only, part, and it's pretty small, that, um, I, it's a section of the south elevation on building two. Um, the, uh, the left section of it is the only section of any of these buildings where I looked at and went, it looks a little clinical, I guess. Word for it. Um, but really, again, when you're trying to have all of these diverse things, um, maybe that works too. And, uh, you know, to, to say that there's one small portion of one elevation of all these buildings that I was like, eh.
I actually, I actually in that case, you know, not to, uh, um, criticize ourselves, but I kind of agree with you on this one. I think the south elevation of that building is one of the weaker, things in the presentation. I, I mean, it's hard to pin down why, but I, I agree, this doesn't have as much, integrity, I'm going to say, maybe as some of the other elevations. So, uh, I, I guess, you know, I'll agree with you there.
It's a, you know, it, it's pretty minor in the, in the grand scheme of, of, of how much of this is, you know, right off the bat, working.
Yeah, well, thank you.
The, uh, in, in, uh, reference to what Bill was saying about the building seven, I, um, where he was asking for some kind of a, a break. I know we had spoken, a while ago about using, um, something that was a, a break in the, in the facade, but not necessarily a break in the building, but might appear as though there was an alleyway, like a skinny alleyway that was going back. I'm not.
I don't think, right. And I don't think we've achieved that. We did have that discussion. We, we talked about that. How do you make a, at least a break that, everyone thinks of as a break, even if it doesn't pass through the building. I'm not saying what I know the final solution is, but even, to get to that level, I don't think we quite got there. Um, you know, we're, we're trying to make this building work. Uh, you know, without adding additional circulation elements, like additional stairs and elevators. So there's some advantages for us. You know, frankly, just functionally, uh, at the end of the site, not, not to have a pass through, but, um, I guess we need to go back and look at it because I agree, there was a conversation about how to, at least convince people that there's a break, whether it's physical or, or just, um, kind of visual, kind of, uh, um, I, I, I guess we, we need to go back and look at that because I, I think you're right. Both you and Bill, we haven't quite gotten, where we should get, get here.
Um, I had one other question. Um, was kind of a site plan issue. Um, and I just wondered about all of these entrances. You have all this, um, all these entrances on the first level to bring this life down to the first level. Um, are the, are there going to be payos or sidewalks that coming up to these? That it's just not worked out yet, or are they like entering into little garden spaces or?
In general, there will be sidewalks that lead up to those. I think that is our intent. They're loosely shown on here. I think relatively consistent shown. Our site engineer is still working out the grades. We've given them kind of the rough grading concept that we think will work with this. And we are orienting this, you know, the street, parallel to these buildings so that the sidewalk and the street and, and these, you know, little patios or stoops can all work together. So we expect to have connections to these. Now, immediately the, the unit is able to be accessed, you know, from both, well, from the internal stair or elevator that could come up from the parking structure below. Or in fact, could be accessed from the north side if you were parked, I'm sorry, south side. If you were parked, in a garage on the railroad track side, you could walk into the building from the, south and gain access to these units. But this, this doorway that leads to the unit, you know, could be used either as your porch or as your entrance. It's more likely to be used. you know, could be used either as your porch or as your entrance. It's more likely to be used as your porch because it's off your living space. It's not, you know, by your front hall closet, so to speak. But yeah, we'll, we'll have connections. So, you know, we fully expect that people would, you know, walk out that door, you know, to the canal, you know, that's what I would do.
Yeah, I noticed, I, I had that question too, but I noticed as I looked hard at your site plan, you do sidewalk along there.
Yeah, I think we do. Yeah, I think we do. It may be.
Yeah.
I think the ones I was looking at were more on the the south elevations, I guess.
Okay.
What I'm seeing in the plan is, is not actually entrances. I'm, I'm, you know, I think I'm confusing the little balconies from the plan view.
Yeah.
That those were some of the entries, but I do see the sidewalks coming in, so.
Yeah, we, I guess we'll have to study that. I'm not sure on the south if we will consistently, as consistently have walkways leading up to those little porches or terraces or balconies. We'll have to study that. I think on the canal side, we think it's important because that's the activity side. On the, on the south side where we already have building entrances, you know, actual physical entrances to the common space within the building, it, it may be less desirable to have other walks leading to a person's individual terrace. But we'll have to look at that.
Okay, I think that was all the commentary that I have. I think it's really looking wonderful.
Well, thank you.
Impressive amount of work too and detail.
Yeah, yeah. I, 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 I didn't really fully express how impressed I was with the work that you guys have put into this and now overall. And, and I, in, in hearing everybody talk, I, I would go away on that roof line on Building Five because it, it is a diverse look.
Yeah, it's, it's ironic. It's ironic that you can make things more varied with less variation, but at some point, less variation is more variation. That's, I mean, it's kind of contradictory, but it's.
Yeah. I, but I won't go away on my feeling about the, the Building Seven and some way to break that up, whether it's a indentation that's, that looks like it's a walk through or.
Yeah, I, I think we can get there. I, I, I think you're right. You know, both of you are right that we didn't achieve as much as what was expressed, you know, and, and kind of the, kind of meeting the minds we had a couple of meetings ago about that building. So we, we can look at that.
Okay. Jeff Pollock, anything to add, comments?
Yes, just had a question and one or two comments. On Building One, there doesn't appear, I guess all of these units have underground parking. See on the west elevation where, where the parking entrance would be.
So the parking, if you, go back to the site, the, yeah, so the parking entrance actually, even for Building One, is all the way over between Buildings Two and Three. You won't have any, we, we're trying to limit the amount of curb cuts, you know, through the sidewalks and the amount of, you know, kind of vehicular well, vehicular driven design kind of components. So you can see where the P is there. That is your access to the underground parking and it connects underground between Buildings One and Two. So there will be no.
So you'll be able to, you'll be able to drive the whole length of.
Yeah, all the way from that P, all the way back into Building One. You know, I think there is a very small possible, well, maybe there's a small possibility that the site engineer is going to come back and say, we'd rather put that P between one and two than between two and three. Which, you know, from a distribution standpoint, might make more sense. But we'll have to see how that plays out. I think at this point, we think the grades will work with the P where we're showing it. And there's reasons, there's positive reasons for doing it there. And there's positive reasons for doing it between one and two. But we're only intent on having it in one or the other location. For right now, and I think hopefully it will stick, it's going to stay where we're showing it, but you, you wouldn't experience anything. You'd never see anything within Building One at all.
Got it. Okay. Now, the much discussed Building Seven. And people talked about breaking that up. And I, I see the center third is really, the roof design is really seemingly out of place with all the other designs. It sort of looks like you were going to put two cupolas up there, but only wound up with one. So you just ran the roof up to it and called it a day. And I know that's not the intent, but I think there's an opportunity there to it kind of was, I, I'm not sure how to describe it, but it seems to be really out of place. Now, I have come around on the flat roofs in the other buildings, but this one really stuck out. It just stood out to me as something that maybe needs some reworking. I don't know.
Okay. Yeah, I think everybody's kind of zeroed on Building Seven. I mean, I, I like Building Seven. I think, you know, the, the facade along the canal side to me is super successful. But I, I understand the concerns that are being expressed. We've had, well, we've had debates about the kind of horse barn configuration of that larger roof and certainly like we acknowledged, you know, we obviously had talked with you earlier about the need to kind of create a visual break in this building, which is probably not, not as successful as it could be. So.
Yeah, I think as you stand it, but it's interesting as you stand, if you were looking at the north elevation, that roof line is sort of is set back. That's what the shaded area.
Correct.
Yeah.
Yeah, it is. It's only appears on the second half of the building. So if you go to the side, side elevation, Miriam. You know, you'll see the whole canal side is actually much lower and this thing is peeking over the top as kind of like a, a background element or a building behind the building, which I think actually makes it, that's what I like about it. You know, that it is this kind of silhouette behind the building that creates these layers. And I think that would actually be pretty nice. But, you know, we're not, we're not wedded to any one thing in this development. The nice thing about this, this development is that you can change one thing and it doesn't necessarily impact changing something else. So we're happy to look at these.
Yeah, one option might be to widen that, that cupola area.
Yeah, no, that, that could work. Yeah, exactly.
A little bit, you know, it just sort of looks, it really is spatially, I don't know, odd looking.
The proportions, the proportions are a little bit unexpected, maybe a little, you know, not as resolved maybe as you might hope, right? So it doesn't have a classical kind of proportion between sides and center. Yeah.
Right.
Maybe that's, maybe that's the issue with that. I mean, I, I kind of like that as a style feature, but maybe proportionally, it, it needs to be, and particularly if we open up some of that center section some way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think those are both good comments. I, I think, I, I think a more kind of statement at the kind of terminus of this street is actually a good thing. It kind of like is a little punctuation mark, but I think your point, Jeff, is pretty good that, that the relative size of the little, you know, center section there is probably not in keeping with the overall, yeah, scale of that P. So, yeah, we'll go back.
And I also, just a final comment, I also mentioned looking at some of the trim and, and you've already covered that, but I'd just like to underline it a little bit. Some white windows, some black. And, you know, I'm really coming around to some of that black look in this. So I, I think that, that in some facades, that's terrific. And, you know, maybe that's a refinement when you get down to the final.
Yeah, I think we, we've got to put, you know, a whole material board together that kind of says, okay, what are these possible trim colors when we have this type of siding or this color siding? And, you know, there'd be, there may be more than one, one window color for a type of siding or color siding, but maybe we repeat that same window color on a different one. So there, there's a study there that needs to be done.
Yeah, yeah. I do like the black now, kind of thing I saw.
Great.
Thanks. That's it, Phil, for me.
If no other comments by the board, let's talk about next steps on this. I, I, I'd like to see us go to a final decision making review, but we cannot do that until, as I understand, planning and zoning review has their review and the trustees have their review. So in the meantime, maybe.
Can I address that, Bill?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. I think the next step. Well, I think the next step is for us to you know, take what we've done here and make our presentations to the PCBA and, and possibly the trustees and move on from there. And then we're going to have to, as, as the words are coming now, circle back to you. Let me say a couple of things if I can. We, we've actually met, well, believe it or not, from the beginning of this project, this is the 167th public meeting we've held on. 167 over 12 years.
I'm glad we came on board late. That's a lot of meetings.
It's got to be the most in town, maybe a world record. I don't know, but it's got to end someday. And again, it is my understanding that we're going to be ping ponged back and forth between the boards. You mentioned earlier that we've met with this restart recently a few times. We've, we've actually met, this is our fourth meeting together. You know, August 12th, we gave an introduction. September 2nd, you know, we, you know, you, you finally said that the mass and scale is, is, looks, looks good. And that the site configuration looks good. October 15th, we met and, you know, you kind of understood our palette, our material palette and our, our architectural style. And then tonight, I think we, what I heard, you know, from you was excellent job, impressed. I heard wonderful from Christina. You didn't see me fall off my chair, but I did. I got back up. But I appreciate your comments. What I would ask of this board at this point is if you could write a recommendation to us, a letter of recommendation for us to take with us back to the other boards so that they can see the work that we've done with you. And I, and as you said, I think CJS really put their heart into this and really is making this beautiful. But maybe just a simple letter from the board, either you can do it, your attorney can do it, or someone just to send us off to say, okay, we're at this stage. We're, we're good with a lot of things. That would be a long way for us.
If it said, you know, we've generally reached consensus and that there's only, you know, you know, a few outstanding issues, be those around Building Seven or other things you might want to mention. I think, you know, the idea that we've kind of reached consensus and that there's a meeting of the minds between the board and, and the developer would be, would be great. I don't know what, you know, what we can get, but certainly think we do want to be able to convince or, or show the other involved parties that you know, at least you and I, you, you guys and us are on a similar page here.
I, I, we'd be happy to do that. Yep. And I, and as you said, we, we think we're, we're on the same page in terms of mass and scale. We're now, with the exception of one section of Building Seven, I, I think we're, we're on the same page. We're happy with what we've seen and your work. And I'm happy to put that, we're happy to put that into a letter to both the planning and zoning board and the trustees. So yes, we'll, we'll do that unless Jeff Turner, is there any reason why we can't and shouldn't do that?
Bill, I think there's a way to draft a letter that will meet the applicant's interest here. And not prejudge the application for us.
Okay.
It's basically a summary of where, where we are.
Yes, exactly. Which is, which is all we're looking for. I think if, if you give us a summary of where we are, that's, that's all we could ask for.
Yeah, I, I certainly where we are is pretty evident from these, the recordings of all of these meetings that we've had.
Yeah, true.
And we will summarize those in a letter.
Great.
Okay, good.
And we'll work on building, we'll work on Building Seven and, you know, anything else from the notes that we took here. You know, tonight, so that we can always come back at a future date and show you some improvements.
Good. Okay. All right.
And, and we'll be developing the site, you know, further and these outbuildings and, you know, other kind of gazebos and things that those will obviously want to follow, but, you know, they are supporting cast to the kind of you know, main buildings.
Well, what we're reviewing here is the residential building.
Understood.
And we're not, we haven't reviewed any other outbuildings that may or may not exist.
Totally understood. I, I think, you know, as I stated at the very beginning, they will only add value, I think, to the overall development. But, you know, we certainly will visit that down the road.
Good. Okay. All right. Well, if nothing further, I will make a motion to close this meeting. It was for information only. And our comments are on record and we will follow up as we discussed with a letter. So I make a motion to close this meeting. Do I have a second?
Sure, move. Second.
Real quick, I'm sorry, just because I don't normally do your meetings, I'm just verifying you don't take public comment, correct?
Well, let me make a statement on that. We do not take public comment on these for information meetings only. However, what, what we tell the public is if they have any questions, if they have any issues, put them into a letter, send them to, or an email, send them to the Village Office. We will be happy to respond to those comments, questions.
Perfect. Thank you.
And those will be forwarded onto the applicant as well.
All right.
Thank you so much. Okay, roll call vote. Member Pollock?
Yes.
Member Lanahan? Oh, you mean?
Yes.
Chairman McBride?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your time.
All righty.
Thank you. Bye.
Good night.